Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, September 13th, 2021. The time is now 6:30. Could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is public announcements. Alex Hager, did you have any?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one public announcement. I want to share a very informative and powerful event that is taking place tomorrow here in Abington. Tomorrow evening, Tuesday, September 20-- excuse me, September 14th, 2021, at 6:00 PM at the Abington Public Library, the Abington Board of Health, the Abington Health Department, in collaboration with the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Coalition, will kick off an initiative for all community members interested in addressing mental health in our community. The mental health of all Abington residents, young and old and in between, matters. Millions of Americans understand the struggles facing mental health issues and conditions. As famous American actress Glenn Close, who is famously known for her role as Corella Deville in the 1990s 101 Dalmatian live-action films, said, "What mental health needs is more sunlight, more candor, and more unashamed conversation." It is vitally important that we have these helpful conversations to encourage those struggling with mental health, depression, and thoughts of suicide, that help can be a hand-reach away. Speaking up can save lives. Reaching out your hand to a friend in need can save lives. I want to thank the Abington Board of Health Member-at-Large, Melissa Pond, and the Abington Health Department for making this supportive event possible for Abington and allowing me at the event to share my story with mental health and encourage others to search for their own silver linings and shine bright. So come for the pizza, stay for the dialogue, and engage for the impact. My last one is make sure you also save your calendars for Abington Celebrates Fun Events this weekend. Let's celebrate Abington this weekend. That's all I have for announcements this week, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mike, any announcements?
Yeah, I just had one quick one. With this past weekend being the 20th anniversary of 9/11, I just wanted to thank everyone that came out Friday night for the candlelight vigil. It was really well done. I happened to be working, so I kind of stood back. And I especially wanted to commend the Abington High Football Team and cheerleaders. They came after the game. You know, they were smelly, they had their crazy haircuts, but they showed so much respect and just, you know, none of them were alive back then, 20 years ago. So it just, it meant a lot to see the respect and to see everyone come out. So thank you to them. They should be really proud of themselves.
Thank you. Alex, does that sound good?
Yes, I do. This is a very interesting announcement that I'm happy to announce tonight. Jane Clockadyle, who you might remember, who did a moment of silence for her father a few months ago, I think it was her father. But anyway, she contacted Roger Woods back in May about a former fire engine number one that is a 1947 Seagrave fire engine. And it was found up in Wyndham, New Hampshire. And Jane's family comes from along several generations of firefighters in this town and with the Whitman family and her family. And the engine was located in Wyndham, New Hampshire. It's a 1947 Seagrave, and it still says "Abington Engine Number One" on it. Roger Woods, who owns Old Town Real Estate and a former selectman, purchased it. And Lynch's Towing, who does police toes here in Abington, went to Wyndham, New Hampshire and dug it out of the weeds and got it. Some of you might have seen it. It's now at Old Town Real Estate now. And the hope is that we can have it restored. We're talking with the South Shore VOTC and hoping that they can refurbish it. And it'll be given to the town. Hopefully, that eventually it will coincide with the new fire station. So in order to raise funds, we're going to be doing fundraisers and donations, and all funds will go through the town through a gift account. And then the town will disperse the funds for the restoration. There'll be a Facebook page up tomorrow. It'll be up on the town site, I believe, tomorrow. We're looking for volunteers to help us with fundraising ideas. The first event we're going to be doing will be September 25th at Webster Timberlands. The comedian Dave Russo will be hosting a comedy night there. Tickets are $30. And we're looking for donations for silent auction raffles for that night. We're hoping to sell 100 tickets for that night, and that will kick off the fundraising. And if you're out there now, Roger Woods and I are just going on WATD right about now to talk about it, so magic of radio and television. So this is a great event for the town and a great thing for the town that we can all come together with and hopefully raise the money to refurbish this and make it a showpiece for the town. Thank you.
Okay, Tim?
I do, as Alex Hagerdy mentioned earlier, this weekend is Abington Celebrates Weekend. If you have a lawn sign for Abington Celebrates, please put it out now and bring it back in next Sunday night. Just a quick summary of events that will be taking place this weekend from the Abington Celebrates Committee. On Saturday, September 18th, at 10:00 AM, there'll be a joint scouting event in front of the Frollo School at 1071 Washington Street, hosted by Abington Cub Scout PAC 41. At 11:00 AM at the Dyer Memorial Library on 28th Center Ave, there'll be a Houses Military Records and More Historical Event. Abington Celebrates Community Saturday Night with Fireworks, Family Fun Starts at 5:00 PM. This is behind the Frollo School and Memorial Field. There'll be food games, a beer garden behind the Legion, music by the band Rewind, and a giving and caring table where there'll be collecting socks for the homeless. So please bring packaged socks to donate to the homeless. And then at 8:00 PM, there'll be fireworks. And the rain date will be September 19th for those in case there's any weather, although the long-term forecast looks promising. Sunday, September 19th, of course, is the Jeff Coombs Memorial Road Race Walk and Family Day. It'll be the 20th and final. That starts at 9:00 AM at the Woodstill Elementary School on Chestnut Street. There'll be DJ, free food, raffles, awards, another beer tent, Joe's Crazy Critters, and more. You can register online at www.racewire.com and call 71-921-608 for more info. Also on Sunday, 10:00 AM to 3:00 at the Abington High School, there'll be Abington Music Parents 41st Annual Craft Fair. So all those events this weekend, please feel free to join.
Okay, and I just have one. The Abington Public Library has returned to their full hours. And also, they had put out a letter recently, an email, if you hadn't seen it, that students in grades five through eight may visit the Abington Public Library for short periods of time after school, unaccompanied by a parent or guardian. The space is limited, and students and parents should have a transportation plan in case the library reaches capacity. Just keep that in mind. The, I also want to remind that the library is a busy public building, and to remember that while the Abington Middle School is a secure building with controlled access, the Abington Public Library is a very public place with open access. So that is all I have for that. Scott, do you have anything or not? Okay. So first up on the agenda is a permit for soil removal, 652 Adam Street, Patrick Kearney, under Bylaw 134-1. Scott, do you want to touch on this real quick or just?
Yeah, as you guys are all aware, 652 Adam Street has been in front of this board several times. Part of the project or part of the ongoing issues out there was the soil was removed from that property. He was actually noticed, Mr. Kearney was noticed, that he needed to obtain a fill permit. I think we were under the impression that he had brought in fill, but it turns out he actually only removed it. So he does not need to get a fill permit from the planning board, but Chapter 134 does require that any person wants to remove soil alone from the premises, or from any land not in public use unless such removal is authorized by a permit issued by the Board of Selectmen. So he's here to ask for that. Although it's already been done, it's, still he needs permission for what he has done. So I think we would open it. I don't really have much more in the bylaw on procedure.
Still, the bylaw doesn't say how much to fill?
There's two sections of the bylaw that address, that address fill and removal. In this particular case, 134 is soil removal. We're not really looking at the fill section. I think if you get into other sections of the bylaw, it does have different requirements.
Because it used to be the selectman, if you were bringing fill in, it was the selectman that needed to approve more than 100 yards. And that was changed to the planning board a couple of years ago at town meeting, and I think they went up to 300 yards. I understand that's what's before us, so it's another whole issue to change that at a future time at town meeting, but it really doesn't make sense for the selectman to be overseeing this. But it is what it is, so.
I think, should we open this as a public hearing?
I believe we should.
I think so.
Yeah.
We'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion, please, a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. It's unanimous. Hearing is open. Mr. Kearney, do you want to step up to the podium, say your name and address?
Hi, Patrick Kearney, 652 Adam Street. Want to thank you guys for hearing me tonight. I think we've been through the story a few times, but I'll just recap real quickly. Mr. Robert Sullivan, who's actually here tonight, bought the property next door to me, and he cleared it. And long story short, as a cost-saving measure to him, in lieu of putting up a retaining wall between the two properties, he offered to take down the hill on my side. And then he's, you know, basically, the work didn't go the way it was supposed to go. I expressed some concerns. I got no answers on my concerns. That's when I brought him in front of the zoning. I filed a zoning complaint, as well as other neighbors filed zoning complaints for what was going on. And then he subsequently filed a zoning complaint on me for the work that he did on my yard, removing soil. It's, it's not really, what I had done doesn't really come under zoning because it's not, under zoning, you would have to get a special permit in conjunction with a building permit, or something like if it's an expansion or a building, or if you're selling it for profit, or if you're changing the use of the property, as Mr. Sullivan did with his property, then it, then it becomes a zoning matter. But under 134, it's really, it's really just heavy-duty landscaping. Having soil removed, I'm not building anything in the area. It's just because of Mr. Sullivan's complaint, I had to file for a permit, so I'm filing for a permit.
Okay. Anyone from the board have anything to say or ask or add?
So it's all done. You're not going to be taking any more out?
The only thing I'll be doing now is adding a few inches of lawn and grassing it when I, when I can afford to hire a landscaper.
And just be aware that if it's more than, I, you should check, but if it's more than 300 yards, I think you need to go to planning.
That's, that's for bringing in fill.
Right. So room would be fill.
I'll bring it, I'll bring it. Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, yeah. You know, it'll probably be about, about 30, 40 yards.
Anyone else from the board have anything? Anyone from the audience want to speak on this? Step right up, state your name and address.
Robert Sullivan, 662 Adam Street. What I'd like to say is, I'm voicing opposition to the use of 134-1 for this purpose. When under zoning, you have 175-34, which is a little bit more comprehensive and oversight with what was done. That's all I'm asking. I just think this is a little bit too loose and liberal. There's been no survey of that property. There's been no determination of how much dirt came off that property, which was all required of me, which I provided. And my project was vetted, and it's finally been approved by the planning board. There was only one complaint. Mr. Kearney alluded to multiple complaints. The only complaint was him. Nobody else has had any complaints against me. At the beginning, there were other people at the meetings, but they were for a different property. They were thinking my property was that property, and it wasn't. So that's all I have to say. I just think that 175-34 would be more appropriate oversight for him.
So how many yards did you remove?
From mine?
No, from his.
We don't know. He hasn't done the survey.
Well, you removed it.
A contractor removed it on my behalf, after which we had to use the geological prints or whatever to determine the elevations, and then do a comprehensive survey of my property and compare them to the existing, to what we have. And we determined how much was removed on my property. He hasn't done that on his, so we have no idea how much was removed from his.
Yeah, but you removed it.
I scooped up dirt. Actually, a contractor did. Scooped up dirt and moved it. That's all. That's all we know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? You can come up. Let's keep it specific to the removal.
As I stated before, the reason why we didn't think 175-34 applied is because it was not part of a project, an expansion, a change of use for sale or profit. It's just a homeowner having soil removed from his land. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have anything further?
Make a motion to approve.
Do we want to close the hearing first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to close the hearing.
A second?
Motion a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Hearing is closed. I want to take a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'm sorry, further discussion, just one question. Was the soil that was removed, do we know how much? Do we know if it was more or less than 30 cubic yards?
I'm told it was over 100 yards.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot. It was.
Just jump up one more time.
It was a lot of material. It was, it was in excess of 500 yards. I, I have a topographical map that kind of shows the conditions before and the conditions after, and photographs to support it. What's, what's there now? There used to be a hill. Now it's basically a bowl. Mr. Sullivan put a retaining wall right on the property line on his side, and he and Mr. McKinnon behind him put a berm on the backside. And the other half of the hill is still left on the other side, so my, my yard is basically a big bowl. And the soil is all very loose granular sand and rock, very well drained, never get a puddle there.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Anything further, Tim?
No.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All right, next up, vote to approve the minutes of August 23rd, 2021, and August 30th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 23rd, 2021.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion a second. Any further discussion on the August 23rd minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 30th, 2021.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. It's unanimous. All right. Next up, we have a new, a new thing on the agenda, Representative Allison Sullivan for a legislative update. Just to give a quick overview, I reached out to Allison Sullivan, asked her if she would come in quarterly or something of that timeframe and give just the board an update, be around for the residents to speak with her, answer questions, anything of that, so.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin, for doing that. Hi, everyone. I'm Allison Sullivan. I think I know most of you, if not every one of you. And to everyone at home, I don't know which way the camera is, so I'll just smile. Mike, I do want to make a comment, though. I was actually at the 9/11 memorial service on the 10th, and I remember seeing the football team and the cheerleaders come up as a team and as a whole, and they actually gave me the chills, and they'll probably give me the chills again tonight, speaking of it. To see these young men and young women who weren't even born come out in unity and strength and courage and pride was definitely moving to witness. So I do want to give a good shout-out to the football team, the football coach, the cheerleaders, and the cheerleading coach for having very strong individuals. So I did want to come in this evening to give a legislative update. Many of you probably follow me on social media. If you don't, I have a Facebook page that is very active, a Twitter page that is somewhat active. I'm still getting used to Twitter. But the Facebook page is pretty much where a lot of my information is being distributed. That's just State Representative Allison Sullivan. You can follow, like, and to get all the updates for the State House and what we're doing locally and in the district. We do have office hours every first Tuesday in East Bridgewater and Whitman, and every first Wednesday in Abington. The next office hours will be in October, October 5th and October 6th. October 5th will be at 10:00 AM in East Bridgewater, and 11:30 in Whitman. All these are at the senior centers in every three towns. And then October 6th at 10:00 AM in Abington. Please come by if you have any questions or concerns that you'd like to address with me in the office. Unfortunately, the State House is still closed to the public, so we're trying to be here in the district as much as possible. So I do make myself available. If these hours do not work with anyone, please feel free to email either myself or my legislative aide, Curtis. My email is Allison.Sullivan@MAHouse.gov, and Curtis is Curtis.Boucher@MAHouse.gov. And that's the quickest, easiest way to get in contact with us. Most recently, I think the kind of the talking points that we've all kind of heard about is around these mask mandates, the vaccine mandates. I did encourage Desi to allow for school districts to make the decisions around the mask mandates in the schools. I was very vocal on that. I was not saying I was anti-mask or anti-vaccine. It was simply to allow parental choice and the districts to make the best choice for their district because unfortunately, with this situation with the COVID-19 pandemic, one size does not fit all. And I think Abington, between the fire department, our Board of Health, Marty Go Lightly, you all here have been doing an excellent job on trying to minimize the spread, get as many people vaccinated who want to get vaccinated. And if you aren't aware, Governor Baker made an announcement that everyone in the executive branch would have to be vaccinated before, I believe it's October 15th or October 16th. Alex might be able to determine those dates for me.
October 15th.
Yes. And, and then with Governor, I mean, President Biden's recent mandates as well. I filed a bill previous to those, well, in response to Governor Baker, but previous to President Biden's mandates. It's HD4452. It would protect employees to not have to present a vaccine card per se for employment. I think we've all seen during this pandemic, a lot of people have had lost their wages, loss of employment, loss of business. And we shouldn't be putting another roadblock in the way of these people in the Commonwealth and across the United States to have employment and to have their liberties taken away from them. But aside from all that, I also wanted to kind of give a house update a little bit. The budget was filed July 9th, as many of you know. I believe it was totaling around $47.67 billion, which is a lot of money. We were able to put $1.2 billion, I believe it was, into the stabilization fund, or I believe it was. And it's totaling at, I've said, $5.8 billion this year, which is really good considering what we had for the pandemic last year. The schools here in Abington were received roughly about $11 million, close to $11 million, for direct educational aid. And unrestricted aid, it's about $2.1 million, I think we got here in Abington. And then Chapter 90 is a reimbursement fund from the previous year. We were able to secure funds there. I did file several amendments in the budget for local, the local aid here in the towns. Abington, we were able to secure $25,000. I believe Rick Collins and I were in, you know, conjunction on this one with getting Affordable Housing Trust to have someone come in, so we got $25,000 in the budget for that. And then another $100,000 for Abington's traffic and sidewalk improvements, which is a good thing going forward into this fiscal year. I'm here if anyone has any questions this evening. If you don't, I don't know if the board has any questions for me.
Can you give us more money?
You know, you are not the first person. I think I've had that question asked of me several times just in this past weekend. And I have to give a shout-out to Whitman because Whitman actually asked for more money as well. You know, I'm advocating, like, you know, I'm advocating as much as I can. I'd be happy to discuss any priorities that the town has leading up to the next, you know, budget because that will start very soon. You know, it's almost a blink of the eye, and we'll start having those discussions. And anything that you know that might be an independent project, one-time fund that we can try to get, I'd be more than happy to put amendments in the budget and advocate for them.
Thank you.
And Alex, as far as ideas for fundraising, the cornhole did a great job. And I have to give a great shout-out to Adam Gunn on the veterans.
So you suggest that he host a fundraiser for us?
Yeah, Adam, I'm sorry. I don't know where the camera is, but I'm sorry. I am.
That's a great idea.
I think Cornhole definitely brings not only Abington, but other people from outside, you know, towns.
It's a great idea. I'll reach out to him and, nights at Columbus and.
I thought you were going to say bowl when you said the bowling alley, but you're going to have a comedy night. Maybe you can have a bowling night, too, at one point.
We could do that, too, yeah.
I did bowl out in Colorado in heels, and I had a nice strike. It was really good. One time, one roll. It was great.
Is there any video of that?
Was that?
Any video?
No, my cousin wished there was because he was actually shocked.
Anyone from the board have anything? Well, I appreciate it. Lots of great updates. You're doing a great job up there. And again, thank you for coming in, and hopefully we can get you back, you know, sometime around December or January.
Yeah, I think this would be really good to get the, you know, I know Kevin Tocchi does a great job at having me on Abington Cam, but I think also being here in person will definitely be beneficial for everyone, including myself. But it's, I do great work because I have great people that, you know, help and support me into stuff that's going on here in Abington.
Again, thank you and appreciate all that you do for Abington.
Thank you, Kevin.
Coming in tonight, spending some time in.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is appointments to Conservation Commission. With this, we had received some correspondence, so at this time, I think we should take it under advisement, and we should bring the matter back up on the 27th. How does the board feel on that one?
That's something Town Council's still working on, correct, as far as, so nothing to announce right now, but.
Correct.
It's in their hands. That's why we're passing. I agree.
That's good.
What, what are we moving to the 27th?
We just talked about the appointments to the Conservation Commission, that we had received some correspondence, and right now it's under advisement. And we'll basically bring the matter back up on the 27th at the next meeting.
What pertains to why we need to discuss it?
On the advice of Town Council, we're holding off right now.
Is it, so is this an ongoing investigation with Town Council or the advisement? Do we have to put this on the next agenda and discuss this?
Strongly advise that we follow the guidance of Town Council, yes.
I just, I think, for, what are we discussing regarding the appointments?
We are simply just putting this on to the next agenda. We're not discussing anything at the time. We've received some correspondence, and we're waiting on further advisement, but we're going to put it on to the next meeting's agenda.
That seems very vague.
Well, it's vague because we're talking, we're waiting to hear what Town Council has to say about the correspondence we received. We don't have an answer. On the advice of Town Council, it was to. Town Council, it was to delay this until the next meeting.
What was the delay for? Or, not, not, what? Yeah, never mind. Well, yeah, what was the delay for?
Did you get the email the resident, a resident had sent out?
Yes, I did.
That's why.
That's, that's what they're doing. So, Town Council's looking into that complaint and recommending we don't, we don't deliberate on it until they give us further advice.
Scott, have they spoken to you about this, about the complaint?
Has who spoken to me?
Town Council?
Yes.
So, if Town Council has given you advice on it, what's?
That is the advice we're following tonight, Alex. So, we received that email. That town manager had basically forwarded it to Town Council, and the advisement that they gave was to hold off on this tonight, and they would, to put it on to the next meeting's agenda on the 27th.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have to have a motion or a vote to move that to the next meeting?
I don't believe it's necessary.
No. I mean, do we want to take one?
Oh, I mean, you can if you look for support, but it's, it's really at the will of the chairman.
Okay. So, you know, I'll entertain a motion to move it to the next meeting.
So moved.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead. So, Alex, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion to put it on to next meeting's agenda?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. For one, motion passes. Next up on the list tonight is the appointment to the Fire Station Building Committee. So, we have one opening on this committee. Is that correct?
That's correct. We did get a, I did get an email resignation from the committee from Mr. Dombrowski.
And we only have one applicant?
And we only had the one.
Leftover from?
Yeah, leftover. Peter Walters had expressed interest.
So, I would make the motion to appoint Peter Walters.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? It's unanimous?
My interest in that, briefly.
Oh, yes. Stop it up.
Thank you, John. Out of your fire chief. I would have said this earlier. I think we may have missed a public comment, but that's fine. I just wanted to thank all of the members, both the past, we've got a couple of members that for various reasons no longer run that committee, and we've just brought a few more members on, both in the last meeting and tonight. And I just want to thank all of the members for stepping up for that. The original members, the original five have done and continue to do some excellent work on that. Every single one of those members was very professional at all times. They were knowledgeable. They shared their experience and a lot of unique experience. We didn't even all agree at the same time, but sometimes that makes a very good committee, to be honest with you. So, I just want to thank them. I want to welcome the new ones on board. There's a lot of work to be done. We're actually somewhat behind, however, that's due really to just the long process of putting out the RFPs for the OPM and signing contracts. And to be honest with you, we've had a very full plate, the entire town management staff this summer or so. But there's a lot of work to be done to move forward. And with any luck, we can hopefully someday find a nice house and location for the 1947 engine that Alex spoke about. So, thank you.
That'd be awesome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That old stone building, it was great.
I, I think we should expand the new fire station and put a glass room right on the front. We put it in there.
Bring it to town meetings.
John could handle that.
All right. Next on the agenda is discuss liaisons for boards and committees. So, you did get a packet of all the boards and committees. I don't know if you guys have gone through these yet to see if there's any certain committees that you feel should be added to the list. I think at the back of this packet, second to last page, it does have committee liaisons. I think that definitely should be updated as one of them is surplus land. I think that needs to be switched to the open space committee. Do we want to look through this and make a list of what wasn't committed? Do we want the liaisons for and then?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put this off till the next meeting also, if we could, since we just received this this afternoon.
Okay.
If that's all right with everyone else.
Yeah, it takes some time to look at it.
Yeah, it is, it is eight pages long, so take a look. A few of these we already have. I think some of us are already on, so.
I think it would be good, too, before we vote on who's going to be the liaison of certain committees, to really define what we're looking for, or what, and what their role will be.
I agree. I think we do.
Well, and update some of these, like Rockton Power Plant, I've never even heard of that.
But you're their liaison.
No, I'm not. I think it says Tim.
I think, I think with this as well, we do, we do some sort of guideline, you know, whether it's a couple of bullet points as far as liaisons to these boards. These boards are functioning. They have chairmans in, you know, a setup already. So, as far as being liaisons, you know, whether, some things I would like to see is that if we need information that the board would ask the liaison to attend a meeting, report back on information. It's, you know, you're simply in an advisory role with these boards. You're not making decisions for these boards. You'd be able to help them, you know, gather information, report back to us, but.
You'd be available to them upon their request.
Yes.
Basically, is, I guess, is how I would word it, but, yeah.
But there are some that we can probably do without Town Office Building Committee.
Oh, there's a lot of them, I feel. I don't think we, I think we could streamline this.
Yeah.
So, we put this on next meeting's agenda for the 27th, and we can go through this, pick the boards and committees, maybe work on some language for the role of the liaison if we don't have anything already. And then, you know, whether we appoint liaisons that night or put it off to the next meeting as well. Okay. Anything further from the board on that, on pushing this to the next meeting, the 27th? Hearing none. So, next item is discussion with John Stone and the Recreation Commission regarding the safety issues with the Memorial Bridge. So, Scott, this one was, last meeting you had talked to us about the bridge was going to be closed due to safety for fireworks.
Well, we received some correspondence from the Recreation Commission suggesting that we close the bridge during the fireworks. And I think that, you know, it brought up the question of this board and us is, you know, should the bridge be closed altogether if it's unsafe? And so, I asked John Stone, DPW Director, to take a look at it, which he has, and I think he could probably answer some of those questions.
Sure. The biggest problem with the bridge was, what we saw was the railings. There was about a 70-foot stretch where the railings were kind of loose. So, we buttoned them up, tightened them up, refastened them. And I think if we coned it off, as long as people aren't leaning on the railings, I think the bridge is fine for the fireworks. But don't get me wrong, it still needs to be rehabbed at some point when the town gets money, or a grant, or whatever.
And we do have, we have the report.
We have a report, yeah. I've read the report a couple of times. It's rated in poor condition, but there are still four other levels below poor. So, I mean.
And also, we have talked with, John's gotten us a cost, an estimate or a price for a cost estimate.
$15,000, yes.
And that person would come out and look at it. Would they put the documents together for us or just give us?
They'd give us a itemized, yeah, list of what we need to have done and a price estimate. And then they could actually do the design if we decide to go forward. But it definitely needs to be rehabbed. But I think it's definitely safe for people to walk on. It's sound. The deck is sound. The beams are a little, they're sound for people. You know, I wouldn't recommend cars go over it, you know what I mean? But we're going to cordon off the loose railings, and I think it's fine for the fireworks. That's my opinion.
So, the railings now were loose. We, what do we do to secure them?
One of the guys we have that works for us, Willie, he's a welder. He's welded before. He welded a couple of sections that were loose and refastened a few sections. And it's pretty good.
Okay.
And then we'll put, we aborted some Jersey barriers, the plastic type. We're going to fill them with water and put them in front of the, where the railings were loose, just so a lot of people don't lean in that particular area. But I think he could have, I don't see a need to close it. I really don't.
Has the bridge been closed before?
Not that I know of.
Okay. And, and to close it, what are we talking? I mean, a lot of people have watched the fireworks from this bridge, so closing it also kind of gives us another operational issue?
I don't think it gives us an operational issue. I think it just, it prevents people from going from Lake Street to the Grove. They'd have to go around the other way.
I'm just thinking of a staffing, I mean, to close it, if you're going to, would you need a police detail out there, or how would you close it?
No, I think, I think we could, we could find a way to like cone it off, barrel it off, whatever. I mean, we could close it if you wanted to, but.
Because making sure that people actually follow the closure might be a little more difficult, if that's what you're suggesting, yeah?
Yeah, I guess.
But it sounds to me, and, and, you know, we'll take a look at it with John, it sounds to me like problems.
I'm confident in what John's doing.
Yeah.
You know, going further, we did talk with, or I didn't talk with, but I know Sean Riley has reached out to the CPC on some funding to assist with.
Allison.
To, to assist with, of paying for, you know, the survey, and also to help us, I believe they were going to help us with the treatment for the water, too, if I'm not correct.
They were, yes.
Yeah, so.
It's a lily pad. Well, they're not lily pads. It's an invasive species.
So, there is, there is some help on the way, and then I think what we'll try and do is start working at least some maintenance into the budget for that and working some maintenance for the water treatment into the budget.
This study you talked about before, the 15,000, they'll give us a punch list of what needs to be done.
Correct.
Will they prioritize, like, okay, this is what should be done first, and?
It's the same company that's designing the Central Street Bridge that we already got approved for.
Okay.
So, they'll also give us a budget of what it would?
That's correct.
They're going to tell us what it's going to cost.
It's just rehabilitation. It's not, they don't have to take the whole thing down. The piers are still in good shape. The piers in the, there's one point where the pear is offset with the deck and the beams, so.
When you look at all the repairs to be done, it seems very daunting. But if you break it up and say, okay, if we do the railings this year, it seems more attainable, and instead of just paying for one, one big price, just over the, over the next 10 years.
Did we do a study on this before, or was that different from?
No, we did.
It was years ago now.
It was a couple of years ago.
2018.
Yeah.
It was about a, I think it was about a 70-page document. I didn't want to print it out and bring a bunch of trees.
Yeah, Scott emailed it out. I, it was my midweek reading last week.
Yeah, I read that a few times. If you look, the concrete is sound.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just that railing section.
Okay.
Okay. Well, that's good news for Saturday night.
Yes.
Board, if anything, further on that?
No, sir.
And you're good.
Stop it up.
So, Rachel Collins on the Chair of Park and Rec. On the recommendation of somebody on the Park and Rec Board, they were concerned about people using the bridge and just the safety of the bridge. And it was recommended that we take a vote at our last meeting to not have the bridge be available for fireworks and have that then forwarded to, to you folks and to Abington Celebrates Committee. We have a meeting Wednesday night. We were trying to meet before this meeting, and it just didn't work into anyone's schedules, and we found out that this was going to be on the agenda. So, we do need to amend our vote on Wednesday at our meeting, and I don't know procedurally how that's all going to work. Just because it, you know, falls under kind of our jurisdiction, I don't know how. Now that we have further information that we know everything's okay, I don't think it's going to be a problem, but I just want to.
Yeah, I just.
Timing wise, it's like, we're like, we need it Saturday.
And that was, so, that was another thing I had Scott look into on the, as far as where this falls. Scott, can you kind of?
Well, I mean, technically, the way I read it, under the charter that, I mean, the, the director of the Department of Public Works would have the authority to close down that bridge. And obviously, if it was a safety issue, so would the chief, the fire chief, or anybody charged with that sort of thing. But it really doesn't seem to fall under the purview of the Park and Rec Department to actually close it, so I don't know that it matters. It, no, no. But I mean, I think it's very important that, that you did look at the matter and that you made the recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that that's always something you have the ability to do. But the actual ability to close it, I think would.
Because that wouldn't have come up otherwise.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, everyone knows it needs repairs, but it would not have come up for Saturday night had the Park and Rec not brought it to the attention.
Yeah. So, I'm glad that it's safer than we thought it was, but we know it definitely needs work. And Allison, we're coming at you personally.
Yeah, Allison's going to fix it.
Yeah. Yeah. The 10th, about it, so he's already asking. Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, as long as that's all, and we'll just, again, just, that'll be on our agenda for Wednesday night. It's already on our agenda for Wednesday night. Thank you.
Definitely, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like I said, hopefully we can move this forward, you know, work on the repairs and get this moving so we don't do another study and not do anything with it.
Yeah, you know, the, it, like I said, we're going with CPA and CPC for money, but that's going to be like after July 1 before we'd actually, you know, so we'll have something on town meeting this year, but, you know, it definitely won't be right away. But we are committed to taking care of it.
Okay. So, next up is vote to approve the road safety audits done by the Old Colony Planning Council for Chestnut Street, Old Randolph Street, and Randolph Street. Want to jump back up?
Yes, sir. Jeanie has a handout for, you can, your reference later.
I think I gave them all.
We got it.
You already have one?
It's the same one, yeah.
Oh, you, you guys already have one?
We do.
Oh, geez. Old Colony Planning Council performed two road safety audits in town. The first one, which I'm most concerned about, is at the intersection of Old Randolph, Randolph, and Richard Fitz, 139, and Chestnut, Chestnut. And they performed the second one at Rockland Street on 123 and Elm. But the one we're most concerned about is the one on 139, and we'd like to get it placed on the state's transportation improvement program. But the first step on that is a vote of this body for your support. So, I need.
And the vote will be for them to?
I gave the verbiage to Kevin.
Oh, perfect.
Yes, we do have that. So, this would put it on to the state tip list.
This is, this is a vote of your support to, for safety improvements at this intersection. There's been 39 accidents between.
Which, which end is?
139, Chestnut.
And Hancock? Oh, Chestnut.
No, we already, we already have a project for the, on the tip for the intersection of Chestnut and Hancock. It's going to be roundabout. That's not scheduled for.
No, I don't mean that. 139 and Hancock and Fitz, Richard Fitz?
No, 139.
And Chestnut.
And Chestnut.
And Old Randolph.
Yes.
Okay.
And Old Randolph.
Okay.
Right there.
All right.
There's been 38 accidents between, between 2017 and 2020, there were 38 accidents. 12 years ago, OCPC recommended us putting a set of traffic lights there, and it meets the warrants for traffic lights. There's a strict set of rules that apply to traffic lights. And this particular intersection meets those traffic warrants.
I'm a, I'm a professional driver, and when I come down that, I still take a right and then a left on a Hancock because shooting across that.
Yeah.
You're taking your life in your hands.
There's a lot of problems with it. You know, the LED lights we put in helped. We've cut back some overgrowth on all sides, but it, the.
Just the way the road is there, it's tough.
It's too wide. It's not safe for pedestrians either. It's off skew. Chestnut and Old Randolph are off skew. That's part of the problem. So, if we can get it on the tip, granted it'll take some time, probably five years, but at least we're starting, we're trying.
Get started. Would they, would they align the intersection or no? Would it just be those two roads?
Yeah, it would be a complete, probably overhaul of the intersection.
And like you said, we put that.
And it's funded by the state.
Yeah. We put the LED stop sign up there a couple of years ago, was it now?
LED streetlights, they were just put in probably within the last couple of years.
No, you're talking about the blinking stop sign. That's about two years ago.
Yeah, we put those up there a couple of years ago, yes. Sorry, I misunderstood you, Kevin.
Yeah, no worries.
Those were on a grant as well, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the concept of safety improvements to the intersection of Randolph Street, Richard Fitz Drive, Chestnut Street, and Old Randolph Street, and to work on the, and to work with the MassDOT District 5 on the design, construction, and possible placement on the state's, state's transportation improvement plan.
We motioned. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Great. Next up is reconsideration of beer tent for Wednesday food truck event. Scott?
Yeah, there didn't seem to be any issues. Wasn't a huge crowd when I left here. I don't know if it got any bigger, but I had no complaints. You know, we, they submitted their insurance policy, they will cover them for the month of October every Wednesday, so, you know, I think we can continue to monitor it. They don't have to leave that section of the, you know, the Riley Field, they don't have to move over to this side. There's nothing really going on there on Wednesday night that will conflict with it, so.
Did they rope it off?
Yeah, they had it set up properly.
The motion we had made before, was that basically they could go?
We put in Scott's hands to approve pending.
So we don't really have to take any action this tonight? This is more an update?
Only if we reconsider, I think it was the, we just put it on in case, you know.
In case we wanted to.
Just for an update, yeah.
Take it away.
So we're good.
We're good, and my work for Wednesday night was just canceled, so maybe I'll join you this week.
All right, next up is the town manager's report.
Okay, so, as you recall, the town conducted a survey between August sixteenth and twenty-seventh regarding our website and what people would like to see on our website. We got a hundred and five respondents and fifty-two general comments. Not all the comments were aimed at the website, but they were comments nonetheless.
Were they physically impossible?
Yes, some of them were. The, we, at the same time, what we did is we were attempting to start a process for email captures, so we also managed to capture ninety-six email addresses. The questions we asked were basically about, you know, website content, we also were kind of looking at how many, how often people who did visit the website, you know, would visit it, and about thirty-eight percent of the people who do visit our website say they do so monthly. Some of the biggest reasons they do visit the website, they are looking for information on town news. One of the biggest things that seemed like people were looking for was news, local events, community calendar, streamlined usability, better search capabilities, and a more complete contact list. So the process has already begun on updating the, the website, cleaning it up, reorganizing, checking to see that, you know, links are active and up to date. You know, we're working with a consultant, we're going to be meeting, they're going to be meeting with individual departments, department heads over the next couple of weeks to look at everybody's page and see what's going on with their pages. There will be a whole new look to the website, we'll be working at it and changing it behind the scenes until, you know, we won't roll it out until we know it's working properly. And at some point in the very near future, the consultant will come in and we'll sort of preview it with this board, so you can take a look at it and make some suggestions or anything that we might want to change before it goes live. We will be doing something, and I'll be reaching out to each of you and through our social media, and to capture emails, we want to try and do a quarterly newsletter that'll go out with some of the, you know, subjects and topics that are, you know, going on around town and things that we're working at, you know, at town hall. Today, we began the interview process with the town accounting candidates. We hope to move ahead by the end of the week and make some decisions on that. We've been working with the school department and some of the other department heads, the financial team, you know, with the selection process. Department of Public Works is working to try and resolve some of the morning traffic congestion issues, and hopefully, they'll have all those bugs worked out pretty soon. At Glennowitz Way's been a little difficult early in the morning. We did receive notice from the Attorney General's office that last year's town meeting articles, for the most part, have been certified. There were nine of the zoning housekeeping articles that the Attorney General identified a flaw in the posting. There were Zoom meetings and just something about the way that they were posted, so there's a process for curing that, and they're already following through with that process. It's a matter of advertising, and there's a sort of time period that'll go by, but I expect that they'll all be fully certified probably by the end of the year. The Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade will be held in Abington this year. The Veterans Day is Thursday, November eleventh. VSO Adam Gunn will be at our next meeting on the twenty-seventh. He'll give you an update, but it looks like, I guess it's the same route that you would normally do, the St. Patrick's Day route. And so far, everything's going ahead, going forward with that. We are kicking off the budget season, starting with the department head meeting this week on Wednesday. I anticipate having a mid-year report and a proposed draft budget to this board on mid-December, probably in your meeting on the thirteenth. More refined product will go to the finance committee sometime around the second week in January, and it is my intention to schedule town meeting for April fourth, as prescribed in the charter and the bylaws. Two sixty-seven North Quincy Street is coming to a close, or it's not coming to a close, but it's, they're close to following their court order. The fire chief who's here maybe would like to comment on it. He did give me a good update on it the other night, and if you don't mind, John, while you're still here.
I have good news. The case at two sixty-seven North Quincy Street came to an official close today in our favor, and all of the, we had a long list of issues that needed to be resolved. That list was somewhat shortened up to a more emergent list by the Supreme Court in Brockton. Those items were all resolved or repaired or removed as of Friday, when myself, members of my fire prevention team and the building department did another tour up there escorted by the Abington Police, and everything was done. The entire list that we had of concerns has been taken care of. At that point, after consulting with our attorney, basically, he was going to rescind the stop work order because they had complied per the order of the judge, so the case is basically closed. Now, just so everybody knows, it's not the public garden up there, it's an industrial site, don't assume otherwise. However, it is much better than it was several months ago. I think there's about at least four buildings that are no longer there. They were, just, they're gone. A lot of, there's about a hundred boats that had been removed, the tires are gone, the trailers against the wooden national grid high-tension lines are gone, that area is completely clear. They must have removed easily over a hundred, probably forty at dumpsters of just debris. Massive amount of work that was done up there. So we're pleased with it, and we also have the verbal authorization by the overall property owner to allow monthly visits between the fire building and Board of Health departments to go up there and continue working with them to continue maintaining and any other cleanup issues that we find, to keep it on track, so it doesn't get out of control like it was before, that we did not know about.
That's great news.
So, one of the issues in the beginning was there was no fire hydrant up there.
There is still no fire hydrant. However, there's also no buildings up there. I would love to have a fire hydrant, there's really no teeth to enforce a fire hydrant if there is no building. If they tried to put a brand-new building on that property up there, anything beyond roughly six hundred feet beyond a fire hydrant, they would be required to install a fire hydrant. There's no main up there, the main is on Brockton. All of the hydrants on North Quincy Street are Brockton hydrants. In fact, they're on the other side, they're, I believe they're all on the Brockton side of North Quincy Street.
So we can't enforce that because there is no building?
Correct. The buildings out front there are fine because they are within.
They're within six hundred feet, right.
Even though they're not our hydrants.
Right.
But to go deep into that property at that point, they would have to get a fire hydrant to properly build a building, so the buildings are gone. They were makeshift structures.
And the camper and everything, that's?
We are satisfied, we toured those, we had a court order to tour those, and I'm trying to be careful of a privacy issue. We are convinced those are not permanent housing. They are used for perhaps in between long-distance trucking like that, a little bit here and there, they're not residential use from what we saw. And the generator house that was powering them is now gone, so.
Okay. Thank you, I know it was a lot of hard work.
Lot of work, the fire, the building departments, the Board of Health, the police helped us with all of this, certainly the town's attorney was a great help on this, so, much better than it was before. You never get perfection, but it's much, much better, and, you know, we'll see what that, what finally happens.
Are the majority of the tenants still there, or did some of them move out?
I believe some of the tenants are gone.
Yeah. And I know one of the tenants is looking to buy some property up front and move his operation up there, so.
I wouldn't know enough to comment on that, but a successful conclusion, so again, thank you for everybody.
Appreciate all the hubris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, chief, and again, you know, thanks to the chief, the fire department, Inspection Services Department. There were a lot of, a lot of time was put into this, and, you know, it's nice to see it coming to a close. Additionally, on the twenty-seventh, I'm hoping that a representative from Wildlands Trust will be here. There is a large swath of, of land that is right on the Holbrook Line, and there's a, the owner of this property is, is looking, I want to say maybe twenty-plus acres, looking to gift it to the town through this Wildlands Trust process. This definitely is a, a piece that the town will want. Hoping to get this open space committee together. I've, I've reached out to them to try and get the initial meeting started, because I certain that they'll want to look at this, but it certainly falls into our plan, it falls into our, you know, into the master plan, to the open space plan. This is a piece that we definitely want to get and put into conservation, so looking forward to working with them on that and getting them in front of, in front of you. The process for it will be that this, this board will look at it, and with the blessing of this board, I believe the Conservation Commission can accept it, and that'll go into conservation land.
Okay.
And that is it.
Scott, on the budget, and maybe Sue, maybe you can answer this, the marijuana, any money, when do we start seeing?
You won't see money from that until roughly a year from when they opened, so that would be sometime in May, and I think the, the only one that's open, their first payment to us would be thirty days after that first year, so probably May or June of next year.
Okay.
Really don't know what that amount's going to be yet, but.
And the traffic issues on Glennowitz for the school, you said the DPW, what exactly are they doing?
They're trying to widen it a little. I think they're trying to widen it, and I, and I believe they're going to.
Was that like to cut out down here on the?
Yeah, yeah, they're trying to make it so that the two, two vehicles can get through there side by side, and it's a little tight, but they're working on it, and, you know, it may be a work in progress, and they're trying to do it in-house, obviously.
Okay.
Scott, I do have a question. Town council on August third, twenty twenty-one stated, there are seven different businesses for a variety of different commercial and industry uses on, between zero and twenty-two Higelm Street.
Town council said that?
Town council? Has, has any of those seven businesses applied for any certificates or anything, or, you know, state cooperations?
I'm not aware of any correspondence from town council that you're referring to. If you can send it to me, I'd be.
Yeah, no, because there was something that was sent by a resident on Vineyard Road, actually, the correspond, sent to you on September twelfth, twenty twenty-one, just, I mean, I don't know if, any follow-up?
I don't have it in front of me, but I, I'm not aware of anything from town council that you're speaking of.
Businesses don't have to be registered with the Secretary of State. You can operate a business without being a corporation, and you don't need to file with the state to be a business.
But are they?
And if you want to deep.
Are these seven businesses filed with the town?
That's actually not a requirement either, that you don't have to, you can just be Alex's mail service, or whatever you want to call it, and you, you can do that, you know? I mean, it doesn't need to be a legal corporation or a DBA. There's, there's no requirement for it that I'm aware of.
So I think touching on this overall, I think the good thing is we have, this Charter Review Committee is, is starting up, and I think, you know, between the fire chief and, you know, other different department heads, there's a lot of input that they can give for this charter review, and I think we're going to have a very thorough.
Yeah.
Review done, and all these things, you know, between boats and everything else in town, we can now take a look at, and hopefully.
Right, because we have no bylaws saying you can't store a hundred boats.
So I think it's, you know, again, nothing happens overnight, but we're taking steps in the right direction, and.
Well, under Mass General Law, section, chapter one-ten, section five, any person conducting business shall file in the office of the clerk of every city or town where an office of any such person or partnership may be situated a certificate stating the full name and residence of each person conducting such business, the place, including street number, and where, and the title under which is it is, excuse me, it is conducted.
So.
So, I mean, there, there are seven businesses that are on between zero and twenty-two Higelm Street.
But they may have, they may not have a business office in Abington. Like, the trucking company may be from out of town, and they're just parking their trucks in Abington.
So, this really isn't on the agenda?
Which technically, if they are, they should be getting excise acts.
This isn't on the agenda, so, you know, this.
Oh, no, but I'd ask Scott, because there was correspondence.
So.
Asking Scott's fine, but.
Asking, but we're having a discussion here. Let's, why don't you, you know, circle back with Scott, you know, later, later date, and then if we need to put it on the agenda, you can reach out, and we'll put it on the agenda and discuss it further if there's, if there's something.
Okay.
All right? Just so we can move this forward, because we can't discuss it tonight.
And I don't want to discuss it, Scott, but I just want to ask, Highland Street, we still haven't a license here and all that? I talked to Kevin about it earlier, but.
Yeah, I.
You're just waiting to get stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody reach out, I just wanted.
No, we're definitely going to.
Sell them right now.
But it, again, it has to be duly noticed, it can't be.
Absolutely. That was the point in my email I sent you initially.